State's 6:30 for site plan modification. Seven o'clock, we have a public hearing for the zoning bylaws proposal. And 7:30 continuation of the public hearing for amended states. We have minutes for approval. We have some bills to pay and signatures on the sexual harassment policy along with some correspondence. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as read? Thank you.
Second.
Second.
All on table?
Aye.
Aye. So based on the members that we have here, I'm recusing myself from the amended states so we don't have the members to go into that public hearing at this time.
Is there something that I should know right now that I'm...
No, we're just gonna...
We already, it just opened.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just gonna make a motion and then have to open the public hearing again.
Okay. Is there anything new in these files besides what we've had since the last term? I'm sorry?
They're it?
No. You all set up? Do you need a motion now?
Yeah, make a motion to continue the public hearing for amended states site plan modification, time being 6:30, 7?
Mike, you're gonna have to, I'm recusing myself, so you're gonna what?
All right. Um, maybe I do need a second to read this. I don't know if I can actually do that.
You can. I'm going to request the same thing.
What's that?
I'm gonna request the same thing.
Request what?
That I can read this.
Charlie, I have a couple of questions on this.
Sure, I can talk to you.
Yeah, we can, okay, cool.
If the board would take a recess for a couple of minutes?
Absolutely, we'd like to take a recess.
Yeah, happy to.
For what?
Um, I just need to go over this with Charlie.
I'm gonna postpone this, say the public hearing for a short recess and return back in five minutes or so.
Okay, take that.
Yeah, doesn't need to be a motion, so.
Hello? Okay.
Okay, so at this time, um, there has been, um, it's been asked that I step down and recuse myself because of a potential ethics issue. So what I'd like to do is ask the party trust if we could suspend this for two more weeks because I need to have a determination from the ethics board of whether or not I have an issue in this. I don't see any other way to go forward, so as far as the delay to you in our 45 days, I'm assuming we're gonna end up being over that. So I guess if you guys did not want to do that, I may have to recuse myself. I'm not really sure, but that's what I'm asking, I guess, right now is if we could have two more weeks because I have to, as far as I understand or look at it, I have to defend myself against some sort of conflict that I'm unaware of.
Mr. Millis, good evening everyone. Adam Brodsky and I represent the party trust. Is Mr. Sculte going to review the videotapes and attempt to mullonize himself to participate?
I'm sure if he does come on one of the days, I'm sure that he would get himself up to date. I'm sure that he wouldn't make any decision without like reviewing all the information, if that's what you get.
He has reviewed, he will review all the meeting minutes. Meeting minutes are sent out to all the members to review, to confirm everything that was said.
Yeah, I'm sure of that.
And again, if he's intending on participating, he may need to do more to comply with the Mullen decision, but that's not my, my role to advise the board as to what, what he meant. I'm just trying to understand the quorum issue here.
Okay, yeah.
So you don't expect him this evening, do you?
No.
Who are you looking for? Carlos, is that it?
Carlos, yeah.
So what, what's happening? We don't have that document.
I'm not sure.
That's why I'm confused on what's happening at this time.
That's why I was saying that was my conversation up there, that's why.
But you understand why I was like looking at this and it wasn't that and I didn't know, so.
Yeah, I, I just, I just received a letter for counsel from Mr. Andrews and the letter was addressed to, I believe, the vice chair requesting your recusal. I just found out about that on my phone, so I don't know anything more than that. So.
Now we need to... Yeah, yeah, you guys wanna take a couple of minutes? That's perfectly fair.
Well, in light of the new docket, I don't really know how we should be making a decision on this now anyways, and I still am gonna say that it is not up to us to waive lot lines. I think it goes to the town and since the bylaws are going to the town...
Are you gonna read any votes? Are you, are you reconvening?
Just openly talking at the board at the moment.
The quorum's...
We, they requested recess, so we're just...
We didn't say that we were in recess, like I thought.
No, the meeting is already said.
They're sitting in a quorum.
They had to step up, so we had to, we had to put the public hearing in recess. Now back in session again.
Thank you very much for your patience. We want to award you, Mr. Millis, as much time as you need to resolve the ethics issue.
I appreciate that.
We have two problems. One, I need to report back to the land court judge tomorrow, but that's, that's more my problem than your problem. The second is, as you alluded to, there is a 45 day time period and party trust is not prepared to waive that at the present. So the question to the board is, is there any chance that the board would be willing to meet next week? And then my difficulties are, I've got hearings on Tuesdays and Thursdays, so I don't know whether the board would consider a special meeting on Wednesday evening to accommodate this.
I'd be willing to, 'cause I feel like we can't get that, we can't take care of it now and I think we're all trying to get this taken care of. My only issue is I have no idea what this is. I've never come up against this or had an issue with ethics before. I have no idea how long I should expect to hear back, so.
So I, I...
I don't know if I doing it by Tuesday, if that, if that gives me enough time.
So I, I was led to believe that town council was going to be here this evening, but couldn't arrive until later in the evening because she had another engagement. So I, I mean, we're happy to continue this hearing a little bit later in the evening when town council's here and perhaps town council can give guidance to the board as to...
I think that would work if you could, yeah, and then we'll, we can go back to our regular meeting, do the public hearings, and then maybe we'll have some answers then, if you guys are willing to wait around.
Yes, no, no, again, we, okay. My, my problem is, is that I have a land court judge telling me that I need to do things. I'm, I'm uncomfortable without guidance from the land court saying, oh yeah, by the way, we agreed to a further extension when the judge is expecting a decision tomorrow. So, and so I, I need to do what I can to accommodate you as well as protect my clients.
Yep.
So we're, we're, we're here, you know, so we're happy to, if you want us to suspend the hearing and/or, you know, continue it until later in the evening, we're, we're here.
Okay. Mr. Andrews?
Mr. Andrews, representing myself tonight as a private citizen, I'm not acting as a selectman anyway on this matter, just wanna make that clear to everybody in the room. I would just have a question, is the council that's arriving tonight council, town council for ethics issues or town council for land use only?
I have no idea, I don't even know if anyone's showing up. But if...
Two parts, she's our land use council, but as municipal attorney, she's also familiar with the state ethics laws to some extent, and she may very well advise what you've just mentioned, which is to, to get a definitive opinion, to go to the state ethics commission. And she may also be able to provide advice if that's not feasible, given what the other alternatives are for the planning board.
Okay, so I think we're all willing to do that, so I entertain a motion to suspend the current public hearing or continue until after the public hearings for the zoning bylaw proposals that, all right, you guys give us enough time, we'll do our other thing and then come back.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I'll second it.
I can't actually make the motion.
So I would just make a motion for a continue, continue the public, to continue the public hearing after the following public hearings.
If we can't, if we don't have a quorum to vote on the continuation, how do we do that?
Make a motion and you second it.
But then we have no, we don't have quorum.
Still have a quorum, we still have three members.
But he can't vote.
He hasn't recused himself.
Yeah, I have not recused myself.
But you ca, but how come you can't make the motion then?
Cause he's the chair at the moment.
Yeah, so I can never, whenever, yeah, so whenever...
All right, clear, I'm good, this teaches everybody, I didn't know that before.
Yes, make a motion.
I'm new to the board, Terry. I didn't know that, so.
Make a motion to continue the amended states site plan modification public hearing until after the zoning bylaws proposal, public hearing, and other meeting minutes or other meeting to-dos following the attorney, the land use council attorney shows up.
Do you have a second?
Um, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'll now be returning to the regular scheduled planning board meeting.
Here we go, few minutes, pay some bills.
Make a motion to pay a bill to the Platoon Halifax Express invoice number 10981 in the amount of $1,471.10.
Motion is a second.
Second.
All on table?
Aye.
You guys are...
So I didn't know about that, so I apologize, but you can see where I was going. Right? You understand?
Yeah, I wasn't trying to do nothing.
Go away again.
No, I just sat here for talking about this and I didn't understand. You understand? Cause I, I'm not a god's woman. I'm not a god's woman.
Wow, my notes must have been really good, look at the minutes they came up with using.
Oh, it feels like it was forever ago, I was like, isn't it? Take too much of this. I think I remember when you made a motion over September 19th. Remember that meeting? Didn't we make a motion to have the hearing on September 19th?
No, it's not the same meeting. It's not the same meeting.
That wasn't the one?
That was just...
Cause I made it the beginning of August and I know we didn't have a secretary that time. And then the next meeting, they said that we needed, that motion wasn't made, but I remember, I don't know if you...
I wasn't here for this meeting, but...
I, I did make that motion. Do you remember that?
Yeah, cause I mentioned it was 15th in August.
No, cause Charlie was at that meeting and he said that that wasn't done at this meeting, but it was. It's missing from the minutes. I remember even checking it on the video and it was done. That would be the only thing that I would say, that we need a motion for the September 19th hearing of the bylaws.
On for September 19th, is it?
Yeah, for tonight, on August 1st. Cause remember, that's how I, that's how I got to this whole thing right here that...
The reminder.
Yeah, cause I used the dates, remember? We did that whole calculation based on that day on the hearing.
So you think that we missed the motion?
Yeah, to have the hearing that day. Cause that's what that math was done on, do you remember that?
I don't remember what, why we had to change the date right here.
No, we were making it. And then I, when I was like, remember? Oh no, but that was that date, this was the other.
Okay.
I think, cause I think I just read it. That's how I came up with that math for when that would have to be so that we'd have all the advertisements and...
Try to get a motion, I missed in my notes.
But you know, see how that makes sense, that that's how I came to it, cause that's what...
It would have been...
Yeah, it would have been like that.
So there is the note, there's a brief discussion as to when the next one will be.
Yeah.
So maybe we, maybe we didn't make an official motion, maybe we're just discussing.
Yeah, I guess it's here, neither here nor there, right? Is it neither here nor there? Cause it's already happened anyways, I don't know. Motion to accept the minutes from the August 1st, 2019 meeting.
Motion is a second?
I'll second.
All on table?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I'll start this, I'll make it that way. Don't want me to hold on to the minutes either, you have a file.
You have your own files, yes?
I take it pretty seriously.
Okay, time being seven o'clock, I have a motion to open the public hearing for the zoning bylaw proposal.
I have a motion to open up the zoning bylaw proposals, the public hearing by zoning bylaw proposal. So Halifax planning board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, September 19th, 2019 at 7:00 PM and the selectmen's meeting in room 144 of the street, the following articles. We, if you didn't receive an article, just as a side note, there are articles up on the front row here, first stool, please feel free to grab one. Please feel free to grab one.
I didn't get it, so I'm...
Okay, a motion to open the public hearings, your second?
I'll second, but...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearings now open, uh... First article up for discussion would be to see if the town will amend, vote to amend, chapter one sixty-seven dash seven, zoning schedule of use regulations from marijuana establishments in agricultural, no. Business, no. Industrial special permit, industrial two, no, and conservancy, no, to residential, agricultural, no. Business, yes. Industrial, yes. Industrial two, no, and conservancy, no. Any discussion?
The only thing is, is I think that for the business, industrial, if not yes, it's special permit, right?
Yeah. But they're all by special permits. Where is it, yes?
I don't know if that's, if they...
Yeah. Any discussion here?
This is the one that, um, we have to vote to see if it goes on the warrant due to the fact that it was on the warrant within the last two years, is that correct?
Yeah, we're holding a public hearing now.
Okay.
As a requirement of the planning board to hold a public hearing, so that it can go to the town meeting. And we're going to have discussion here, and then we make a recommendation whether yes or no.
On all of these, as we go along, okay.
But we don't make those, those votes tonight, we have a bill to change.
Okay.
All right, open up the discussion of the public. Anyone here that presented it, or?
Go ahead.
Could you just state your name and your address first?
Chris Winwood, one twenty-nine Circuit Street.
Thank you.
I recommend that we leave it as is and don't open it up to the commercial business. Because it's already not allowed in the center of town, which most people would think that's where it would go, you know, uh, oh, yes. But by the bylaws, you can't have it in some of the stores down there. So that means any other commercial business is really all residential land now, neighborhoods and everything. Stone Way Drive, Bosworth, a bunch of other neighborhoods, even though there's zoned, it's commercial, it's been all built up into residential ones. So if you vote yes, you'd be allowing it to go into residential neighborhoods. Either right in the neighborhood or on the streets, joining it.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I agree with what Mr. Smith said.
Okay.
I live at four seventy-five Lowell Street, work right behind, uh, Morgan Power Equipment. And I totally agree with him that it would just cause traffic nightmare and don't need anymore of that.
Okay. Yes?
Tom Depplin with Siki Sixty, Sicama. Two thousand seventeen, town voted to allow marijuana establishments in industrial zones. We now have a business who doesn't want it there. So they're asking you to arbitrarily change it to suit them for their convenience. And I think that is a very slippery slope, not just for this business, but for any business that comes into town. And whether it's tomorrow, next week, next year, you're going to give, you'll allow somebody else to do it. And I think it's a very slippery slope, and you need to be careful.
Yes?
When this was first proposed, I already spoke to Attorney General, and they brought up issues with spot zoning. That we're asking the town to change zoning, but really for a specific location. So they brought up, uh, issues with that.
Okay, yes, in the back?
Oh, I mean, it's not spot zoning, I'm not saying before this, but it's not spot zoning. If you're changing possible use of the entire commercial rezoned land, it's not spot zoning. Now, there are a number of areas that are commercially zoned, and this would be allowed by special permit, but it's not spot zoning.
Yes, sir?
Yes, could you as a board review the criteria that would be considered for the issuance of the special permit? I mean, what's, what's the criteria that would be used in order to determine whether or not the marijuana business would be, be allowed by special permit?
Do you want us to talk to you?
I brought the trailer, Billy, and I'm, um, not powering much, I, I believe the criteria for a special permit would be to see if the state or not to be enabled.
Does not derogate from the intent of the bylaw? And we're both the third one. Would be the third. Only, only on the sharing, not on a special permit.
What section was this in?
Yes?
I mean, there's a long list of things that would have to be part of a special permit. You're trying to tell, uh, right now, for instance, as it's mentioned, bylaws, you can't be within five or, within your feet of any school or shelter facility where children generally congregate or any other marijuana establishment, establishment licensed to pour alcohol. Hours of operation can't be between eight A M. and eight P M. It could be less than that, but they can't be beyond eight P M. and they can't start earlier than eight A M. The special permit, as shown in the bylaw, the term of this special permit is two years. From the date of the renewal application, shall be submitted nine days prior to expiration date, et cetera. Has to comply with all state laws and regulations, there are no display of products in facility windows or visible from A Street parking lot. Business owners have to provide security measures, signage has to meet requirements of the site bylaw.
Here, see like this is...
That's all in chapter one sixty-seven dash seven, for a special permit for the retail marijuana facility, which includes both the, well, all cultivation processing and retail sales itself.
Could I just add to that, too? I think the problem that Halifax may see, um, to touch on what you were saying is along one six, a lot of the commercial base goes three hundred feet off of the road, off of the lot lines. And that three hundred feet will bring you into some residential neighborhoods. We do have some houses that are on the main strip, so I, I think it becomes a logistical problem with the zoning board of appeals as what's different in that neighborhood, what is the need?
Back when I spoke to the A G.'s office, they did state, because it was stated on record, that this article to change the zone was being done for a specific building, that there could be issues.
But this doesn't say it's for a specific building, this is a change.
But when it was brought up in previous meetings, it was stated for a specific building.
Well, this is just the chart we're talking about now, but the criteria is in one sixty-seven, seven, um, is it D fifteen? Is that marijuana establishments? No, you know, it's got the five hundred feet, and that's going to be the next article, too, that is requesting a change. The, the, I, I believe, Mr. Keanu, you asked the question, right? So, the hours, like Charlie said, and then the five hundred feet currently how it is, the five hundred feet to any school, childcare facility, those would be the criteria that, um, a variance would be given, or a special permit, sorry, special permit. So it's...
Charlie?
Sorry to go back on spot zoning. I know that the proponents may very well have an interest in particular property, but that doesn't mean that, that's the only property that would be affected by this. If it was, this issue of spot zoning becomes more prominent. As you all pointed out, it's a change in the entire zone for the commercial. It's not one property. Simply because someone is interested in particular property, if the change, if the bylaw requests the change isn't specific to that one property, then it's not spot zoning.
Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, go on to article two. See if the town will vote to amend chapter one sixty-seven, section seven, D fifteen, paragraph one, to read no. Marijuana establishment shall be located within five hundred feet, linear feet, of any school or daycare facility or where any children generally congregate. Any other marijuana establishment or any established license to pour alcohol under the provisions of general law, chapter one thirty-eight, section twelve, or within three hundred feet, linear feet, of any parcel zoned agricultural, residential. Distances shall be calculated by direction, by direct measurement of a straight line from the nearest property line to the facility or parcel in question to the nearest property line of the marijuana establishment. Discussion?
I think this is the one that we looked over the map and decided that if we made it three hundred, we'd be making it so difficult that then the state could step in and tell us where we could have it. Is that, is that correct? That, that was the discussion?
Yep, we were afraid that we made a law that was, or a bylaw that was too strict.
Wouldn't that shut down every spot in industrial zone to have anything if we did something like that? Would there be anything left in town that they go through?
I think that's what we were looking at, to see if it would...
Are there two industrial, uh, locations that have at least three hundred feet of conservancy? Other type of zoning that goes around, not residential? So it wouldn't, uh, go into the industrial at all?
Because of the linear, like it's like lot line, linear foot to lot line, that's where we were saying that pretty much anything would touch residential, because it would be lot line to lot line, it's not like you could go back.
I think there's two of them.
And that even, and that even applies to the industrial zones? What you just said? You just said that even in the industrial zones, there's the three hundred foot problem?
Yes.
In every industrial zone?
That's what we discovered by looking at our, our maps.
It would even...
Can we see, do you have a printout of that? That can show us the...
We do.
The viewer referring to was upstairs for the zoning map.
Can we, is it on a hook that we can bring it down to help? Do you know, because you're in that... Is it, but you know what I'm saying, like it would help to see it, okay.
Well, see what you can do while getting something down here.
I think that's, because we were like saying, like if you're on some of the industrial land, like even over by the brick yard, over off of River Street and one oh five, that their lot lines are across the street from residential and therefore would be null and void. The same thing with the industrial zone, I think that's what we said, it would be three hundred feet to a residential area, I believe, right?
River Street is like a thousand acres, so how could you still three hundred feet to...
It's lot line to lot line. So the three hundred...
A thousand acres, you mean three hundred feet from the lot line?
Because it's lot line to lot line, not three hundred feet in off the street, but rather lot line.
So you're talking about... So if they went seven hundred feet of the road, it does not mean a lot line?
Yes.
There aren't parcels in, set within those that are lots?
No.
They were subdivided like they did with Solomone.
There's still the front, the front edge to get it, I'm just stating that, that's what we found, I'm not, yeah.
I don't know where you want me to put this. I can get another, well, I can also get another easel.
Does it fit here?
No, promise the coat hangers.
Is it just, so whatever, like a couple of clips from your office?
My tapes. So, just so people know what the colors here, white is agricultural, residential, the green is conservancy, that's the C. Even though it gets, it gets confused, E is business, C is commercial. This little, very orangey piece is industrial two, that's where the old V F I landfill was. Blue is the industrial, the very light or pinkish is the commercial areas. So what we're talking about is these parcels here that are industrial, and whether, um, they're going to be within, I guess the question is whether they're going to be within three hundred feet of any of the agricultural, residential, or whether it was surrounded by non-agricultural residential.
So why would we change this? Why would we change this?
Somebody, I don't know who, um, requested this, or it doesn't matter, somebody from the town has put in this article as a request to the bylaw. Uh, changed, I'm sorry, did I say that correctly? Changed, so it's a request to, to change.
Change it to, from this to what?
So, yeah, we, so the original, the, what, what we, what is in the book now says, no marijuana establishment shall be located within five hundred, um, linear feet of any school or childcare facility or where children generally congregate. Any other marijuana establishment or any establishment licensed to pour alcohol under the provisions of G L C one three eight, uh, twelve. Distances shall be calculated by direct measurement of a straight line from the nearest property line of the facility in question to the nearest property line of the marijuana establishment. And in this, they are adding linear feet of any parcel zoned agricultural, residential. Within three hundred feet of that. So, yeah, that's the discussion we had, and we were, we, we as a board were just worried in our discussions that it might make it so strict that then the state could come in and say that we had, we had to do it. Is that, that's the consensus, right?
Yeah, so this will make it more restrictive and more difficult to put one in town.
It protects neighborhoods, is what I was...
Right, this provision would protect neighborhoods from marijuana.
Neighborhoods with lots of children protects that.
Because there is a lot industrial two, and twenty-nine, hundreds of acres, I think, as conservancy around it.
So what...
If someone was to do all industrials, but there are industrial lots, we won't be peed into it.
What precedent do we have to think that the state would step in?
If you create a bylaw that allows a use, and then the applicant can prove that you cannot put that establishment in because of the regulations that you have, and they can overstep the regulation and say that you can put it anywhere in the town.
That was the only concern that I think we all had.
So especially if someone's looking and paying attention, they're going to go through, figure out whatever our decision is, and see if they can work with that, if you know what I mean. So we got to make sure that you don't make any decision that someone else can come back at us with, is how I look at it.
I was just going to say, since we have the map up now, on the first article, it's not allowed currently in the bylaws in the center pink area, the center of town.
Correct.
So if you look at all the other pink areas that if you vote to allow it in commercial business on the first article, basically all those other pink areas are all residential neighborhoods, houses built.
So it would open up to someone potentially opening one in any of those neighborhoods?
Any of those neighborhoods, but also with special permit and meeting all other requirements. So like, that's another thing to keep in mind, is that if we allow either one of these changes, that doesn't allow anyone the right to just put one anywhere. That's not what we're doing, and we're not voting on that.
And, and keep in mind, it's not the board's decision, I mean, this goes to town meeting, and people vote that, you know?
We didn't, yeah, the, we're just discussing it.
But you still have to recommend it, though.
Or not recommend. No, so we cannot recommend it, and it can still pass from the town. So our recommendation, the, the people of the town can put as much weight to that as they'd like, they may put none.
That's true.
Yes?
I did speak to the police chief and some other one, and a couple of places where it was proposed, they didn't have to... it was proposed, they even had concerns with the traffic and stuff. Cause Halifax isn't really built and multiple lanes and the traffic with some of these places have gone in. And it did confirm that there are police chiefs reports, Massachusetts where towns that allow this, they've seen increased illegal activity, a lot more of it.
And additional costs and details, and I don't know, who would, who would care the burden? Do we have a list of where they want potential sites for the facility?
The only one that I think that has been presented before us is somewhere on one oh six towards the BFI area. That's the only one that I think I'm aware of.
Yeah, the one in front of Laurel and Circuit.
Circuit Street, Laurel Street neighborhood.
Yeah.
In my neighborhood.
So.
If you live there, would you want it then?
Me personally, I, I don't think that there's this weird stigma attached to this that everybody else finds, so. Me, I, I mean, if you live near a place where they can open a store, you already knew that in a way, you know? I don't know that this changes that greatly. But anyone who has an issue with the type of business it is, I think that's like a personal thing.
Well, you have, you're gonna have, have you seen the traffic at one oh six trying to get out of there in the morning? You try to take a left or, you know, if you're trying to take a left out of Circuit or out at Laurel, sometimes you gotta wait there five minutes? You got other business going in there?
But I think all of these things get looked at anytime anyone presents a business.
Yeah, but this has, you know, you got small children in the neighborhood and then you're gonna have other people maybe walking around the neighborhood where the parking facility.
Well, I guess you could make the same argument for opening a subway, right? You're gonna, you could potentially have people walking around it, so it's.
Yeah, but I don't think you're gonna have the, the traffic in a subway that we would see in a marijuana establishment.
Again, even if we allowed this change, like those things would still be looked at. This doesn't give anyone the right just to put one in right away. They would still have to go through all of those reviews, just like anyone else. So all of the things that we have as a town to protect the town are still in place. This does not take away the town's protection.
Yeah, we went to, you know, I went to, you know, when Morgan decided to move down the street, take over apartments, you know, with the business moving, a local business moving into the town, you know, just expanding their business. You know, they've been a great neighbor to, to me and probably some of the other neighbors that have gone there, you know?
Yeah, so I also, that's why I kinda also think it's weird when someone's like, oh, there's, there could be a potential business near me where you're telling me that you have a business near you and everything's been great. So I think to.
Different client.
We don't know that. I, I mean.
Have you been to a pot shop?
No, I haven't, but I don't know that those people don't also own lawn mowers.
So I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that we're, for me, for, for our secretary to properly have all these notes down, we're kinda skipping around. So if we can clarify, just as a heads up, cause it seems like we're kinda merging the two articles together.
Yes.
We're trying to, as, as our chairman stated, we're trying to grasp the people's voice as far as how they feel in order to incorporate, incorporate that into our yes recommendation or no, we don't recommend the proposed articles.
Yes.
Now, from this, from this standpoint, I'd like to make sure that if you do have a question or you do have a comment, that you do, A, raise your hand, and then if we are skipping in between articles that we properly, which article you'd like to make a comment on. I just, sorry to kinda butt in there, but just wanted to kinda make that clear for everybody.
That's good, I kinda.
Yeah, I agree with you.
And I also like to just add, as far as the marijuana establishments, for both articles, one and two, as far as that goes and the members of the ZBA are, are here, is that anything needs to go through a special, special permit. So special permitting is not a walk in the park. It is really intense to find out what exactly the, what it's gonna do to the town. That also allows the people that are surrounding a butter is to where that establishment wants to be put into place, to come in and speak their voice. They do the same thing that we're doing now. We're listening to the people. We wanna understand why they are doing what they're gonna do and if it's gonna impede or cause a disturbance or even cause more police trafficking in the area. If there's so many boxes checked off, and I don't wanna put words in for the ZBA, but if there's so many boxes checked off that shows that it's not in favor of this town or won't do justice for this town, I'm pretty sure that they will vote in the way that they feel is necessary for the people of this town. So just as a, a fair assumption, what's going on here is that's what our bylaws are stating in one sixty seven seven and in fourteen and fifteen for all the art, for all the necessary requirements. All right?
Okay, any other comments? All right, we'll go on to article three, to see if the town will vote to amend chapter one sixty seven dash three, zoning definitions for marijuana establishments, a marijuana cultivation, marijuana testing facility, marijuana product manufacturing, marijuana retail, or any other type of licensed marijuana related business, all is defined by the Massachusetts General Law, chapter ninety four H. Two, marijuana establishment, a marijuana cultivation, marijuana testing facility, marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana retailer, or any other type of licensed marijuana related business, all is defined by Massachusetts General Law, chapter ninety four G.
Okay, so this is really just a change because it's, it's like a typo. So they changed the definition in the state law, so now it is G where before it was H. So this is really just kind of a technical thing. Charlie might better describe that.
The by, the by should be there in the actual bylaw, so you can eliminate the brackets and leave the word by. And just to clarify, I know there's a lot of confusion, people might say, well, this, it's medical too. No, ninety four G specifically deals with recreational, not with medical. It's a different chapter and section of the Mass General Laws that deals with medical marijuana. So the marijuana establishments that are described here in the definition are specific to recreational, not medical.
And as far as what you said, we should take out the brackets?
You can take the brackets out, yeah.
Okay.
I think that's to show that there should be a word by there so it can read properly.
Okay.
We can take the brackets out as part of, we go to town meeting, well, beyond the warrant, or if you were about the brackets.
Okay. Any discussion of article three?
Is there, as Charlie just mentioned, is there a need then to address the, the medical marijuana issue as defined or if it's not included in G and not, no longer would be included in H?
It's separate.
Yeah, there's a separate, in our definitions, there's a separate definition for the medical marijuana establishments. I know it's weird, but that's how, for whatever reason, when the state legislature did its laws or between that and the referendum that approved this in the great group several years ago, they didn't say, they didn't define recreational marijuana establishments. What they were saying was, in this chap ninety four G, we're only talking about recreational marijuana establishments. Therefore, anything we're talking about is recreational, so we don't have to say recreational again, we're saying it right at the beginning. So the definitions that are mentioned in ninety four G all relate to recreational. The, as Mark mentioned, either this was a typo or this was a, because they in essence renumbered the chapters and sections in the general laws, we needed to bring this to align with the general laws. So it needs to refer to ninety four G rather than ninety four H, but ninety four H deals with drug education or some sort of program like that, has nothing to do with marijuana. So if someone went to this and looked at it, they'd be, oh, okay, what am I supposed to do now? So we're just trying to make sure that it aligns with the general laws.
Okay. Any other discussion? Good, yeah? Okay, go on to article four, to see if the town will vote to approve the following amendment to chapter one sixty seven, seven D, twelve, zoning specific regulations of the code of Halifax. E, special permits for in-law apartments are granted for a period of five years and must be reviewed after five years. It says renewed, is that?
That's the change.
That's the old?
Yeah.
That's the old. So, so the new one is gonna be reviewed after five years?
Yeah, basically, we're changing that one word.
Yeah.
We said we knew, if you look through the rest of that, you'll see review, for whatever reasons, when we made the change, whether it was a year ago, two years ago, to start trying to review out and renew these permits, we did capture that word and need to make that change. The idea here is, let me type up this, we're doing the first iteration of this, is that having a property owner have to go through every five years to get a new special permit is an expensive and time-consuming task in that they have to find another application, they have to have the notice in the paper, they have to. What we're doing however, is ensuring that there's proper view of the permit every five years in that the building inspector can make sure that the, all stipulations during the permit are being met, rather than having to go through the renewal process. And for the butters, if there's a concern by, well, wait a minute, I'm never gonna be able to say anything. Day one, or day seventeen hundred, or, or ten years later, if a butter or anybody else who's an interested party feels there's a zoning violation concerning one of these properties in relation to the special permit for the in-law, they can go straight to the zoning enforcement officer and say, I think there's a zoning violation. And the zoning, the zoning enforcement officer then has to make a decision, like a determination, is there, this is permit holder in compliance with the stipulation? So this does not eliminate the rights of the butters to object, because they've been able to object at any time and any school will be able to, if anything, there's a problem with a special permit and that the property owner does not mean the stipulation.
Is there any other discussion on article four? Seeing none, we go to article five. Article five, to see if the town will vote to amend chapter one sixty seven, seven.
C.
C, zoning schedule of use regulations for multifamily, special permit in agricultural resident, residential, business special permit, industrial no, industrial two no, conservancy special permit. Two, multifamily dwellings or apartments, two agricultural residential special permit, business special permit, industrial no, industrial two no, conservancy by special permit. Multifamily developments, agricultural residential special permit, business residential, and business by special permit, industrial no, industrial two no, and conservancy by special permit. And to add to chapter six, one sixty seven dash seven D, zoning specific regulations to A, multifamily dwellings or apartments are allowed by special permit from the zoning Board of Appeals in residential agriculture business and conservancy districts. A, it is required that multifamily dwellings or apartment buildings proposed, proposed hereunder shall locate each building on one lot, which shall have continuous frontage on a public or private way. B, the complete lot must be owned, under the ownership of the developer before the special permit is granted. C, design guidelines, the shapes, scale, location of materials in all buildings, lighting, roads, parking, shall be consistent with the character of the neighborhood and with the terrain and vegetation of the site. All utilities connected to multifamily development or apartment shall be installed underground. Discussion on article five?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. My name is Adam Brodsky, as you know, and I represent the Party Trust. The Party Trust owns property off of Allen Street and the development known as Amanda's Estates. And I have one question and then just a, hopefully a brief statement. And I should say that my comments relate to articles five, seven, eight, nine, ten and twelve, all of which relate to the changes to the multifamily development bylaw. I don't wanna have to repeat myself. My, my question is this, who proposed the changes to the multifamily development bylaw, please?
Charlie?
Well, number five is through the board's slide. And the reason that number five exists is that right now, if you look at the bylaw, right now it says multifamily dwellings or apartments, and then it references one sixty seven dash seven D two. If you go to one sixty seven dash seven D two, it talks about multifamily developments. So you've got a discontinuity in that you have in the table of use regulations, a use that then goes to use regulations for a different use, which doesn't work. Just basically, there's a bridge with a hole in it that you can't cross. The idea with five is to say, five, we're going to add in both uses, leave both of them the same way they are, in a sense of multifamily dwellings or apartment is one use, multifamily developments is a different use. We're not changing whether or not they're allowed in any of the districts. If you can see, they're duplicative in terms of whether you're requiring a special permit or not in each of the districts. I tried to make, in terms of the two A, because right now, two is for multifamily developments, two A would be multifamily dwellings or apartments. Do as close as I could, given verbs and nouns and such, the use requirements in one sixty seven dash seven D two, to be reflective in the two A. Just try not play favorites or make a case for something or even a doubt, but to say, let's eliminate that hole in the bridge and have two bridges, one for one use, one for another use. Now, it may be some, at some point the town wants to say, we don't want any of these uses, or we want different requirements of these uses or whatever, but I wasn't going to take that step. I was trying to create, to eliminate that discontinuity. The other articles on that line, I believe, are from the planning board.
Thank you, Mr. Seelig. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, the multifamily development bylaw and its interpretation is the subject of pending land court litigation brought by Gordon C. Andrews, who's a butter to the Amanda's Estate project, who's also a member of the Board of Selectmen. And you may recall that in May of two thousand eighteen, the issue of changing the bylaw to resolve some of these inconsistencies was raised. At that time, the planning board expressed its desire not to change anything during, in the middle of the litigation, for fear of tipping the scales. Nothing has changed, that litigation is pending, and in fact, the changes that are proposed in these articles, and including article nine, actually confirms the interpretation of the multifamily development bylaw that's been advocated by Mr. Andrews, the plaintiff in that action. And so in the first instance, we don't think it's appropriate for the planning board to weigh in on something that's presently in litigation. But the real problem with the changes is it essentially eliminates the multifamily development bylaw. So as you know, Mr. Seelig alluded to, if you look at your table of uses, you have multifamily dwellings or apartments, and in fact, multifamily developments aren't in the table of use, but in your definitions, they're defined separately. So they're two separate concepts in your zoning bylaw, multifamily dwellings and the multifamily developments. Multifamily dwellings or apartments are special permit use particularly in the AR district and, and can presently be, be constructed, provided each of those buildings is located on a separate lot and meets all of the lot area requirements. The entire purpose of, one of the purposes, I should say, of the changes to the bylaw is to add that same requirement for multifamily developments. So a multifamily development under these changes, it's particularly an article. So a multifamily development under these changes, it's particularly in Article 9, is going to require each building located on a separate lot, and that lot will presumably meet all of the dimensional requirements of a lot under the Halifax bylaws. So essentially, you're eliminating the multifamily development concept, because each is going to have to look exactly like a multifamily dwelling or apartment. So if the intention is to defeat and get rid of multifamily developments in the town, the way to do that would presumably be to eliminate the multifamily development bylaw at 167-12. This is kind of a backdoor way that guts this. I mean, I don't, I believe that there's value to having multifamily developments, which allow you flexibility as to density, location of buildings, green space. But if it's ultimately the town's judgment to do that, you should eliminate the multifamily development bylaw entirely. But that is the practical fact of these changes, and as I said, it's taking a side in a piece of litigation. So again, I don't want to repeat myself, those comments relate to 5, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 12.
As a resident, I'd like to say that you stating what you're saying for them is also probably not necessarily allowed, because you're sort of defining what our bylaws say, which is also under litigation if we go by what you said.
So I'm, I'm, I'm the attorney, speaking on behalf of the property owner and the town. You can ask the property owners directly whether they affirm everything that I've said, if you'd like them to do that, but that's my job.
What I'm saying is that if we can't discuss it and make changes, which I'm not disagreeing or agreeing with you, then, you know, but I think the litigation is on what the actual bylaw states, and you're stating that the bylaw says that you don't need lots, and I think that's what the litigation is all about. So stating that the multifamily development doesn't need lots is actually defining that, which is under litigation.
Correct. That's the point I was making. You're, you're, you're taking sides in the litigation by, by defining the bylaw in a certain way as a result of these changes, if the board supports them.
Any other discussion?
I was thinking that zero changes, just like we, I think we stated back in one of our meetings, I could pull out the minutes, something about the bylaws not being able to be talked about, and that's why we didn't have a bylaw committee. Is that correct? The bylaw committee never came around because the litigation was stopping any changes from happening. However, I believe that what we were doing that night, that we, it was me, you, and Carlos that night at that meeting, I don't know who else was there at that meeting, I don't have it in front of me, we're just going off of the one that was changed by the selectmen. Which, this was on the May town meeting and we passed over. And I wasn't on the planning board then, so I don't know how it was, oh, it was not voted on, right? We didn't have a hearing like this, that's why it didn't happen. Okay. So it's been on, it's been, just for the record, the bylaw changes have been started for, from the, for the May annual meeting in 2019 by the selectmen. Not us.
Any other discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll go on to Article 6, to see if the town will vote to amend, Chapter 167-8. E, non-conforming use of the code of the town Halifax with the following change. E, abandonment. No non-conforming use, other than a single-family detached dwelling which has been abandoned or discontinued for more than two years, shall be reestablished. Any future use shall be in conformity with all provisions of this chapter. The zoning board of appeals may approve a special permit for a single-family detached dwelling which has been abandoned or discontinued for more than two years. Discussion?
Just want to read it again, but... This, this is the one that I thought abandonment needed to have a definition for. Did we, was that not what we were saying that night? Oh, it does. That wasn't what we discussed then. I think that was a different definition we were talking about then.
John?
The idea here is that we have a number of substandard lots in Halifax that previously had houses or there are houses now on them that have been abandoned. I understand there may be disagreements about the definition of abandonment, but if someone wanted to go to the building inspector and say, well, I want to do something with that house, then the building inspector's only enforcement officer would have to make a decision back whether it was abandoned anyway, in the sense of more than two years. I think there would be a number of factors that that, that the building inspector would look at before making a determination. But let's assume for the moment that we have, is an abandoned house. How do we reestablish the ability to use that lot, so we don't just have either a lot that sits, doesn't provide any gain for the town, or a lot with a house that even looks worse, because we've said, well, you can't do anything. And so the person, the person say, fine, I'm not doing anything, you've got an abandoned house. Or then it drops on the town's lap, and then we've got an abandoned house that we have to deal with. And we can't, and there's no point in selling it, because if we sell it, let's say it goes through foreclosure, we sell it, it's a substandard lot, we've an abandoned house. Well, who wants to buy it if they can't do anything with it? Maybe in a butter, but then they're going to take the house down, and they may say, fine, we'll buy it for a dollar, because that's what it's worth to us. We gain very little. So the idea here is to have an opportunity, still being the other structures in the bylaws, to allow that use to be reestablished, only for single-family houses on those lots where we've had an abandonment.
So listen, keep, keep us from devaluing property and give someone a chance to, to take an abandoned property and make it valuable again, or give them more of a chance to do so. I assume there's got to be something, even with an inherited piece of property or something that's been, no one's lived in for a couple of years, this would actually probably give someone more of a chance to get in there and fix it up, make it livable.
Man, Andrew, is that a question on that? Two years. I had a family tragedy, I couldn't win the house for more than two years. Took me eight years to get into the garage. I think people need time to go through what they're going through. Couldn't go back to the house. I think they need more than two years.
Again, the idea here is, the first question is, is whether the property's been abandoned. If you can show evidence that it hasn't been abandoned, for instance, are you paying the property taxes on a regular basis, that you haven't let those go into foreclosure? That might be a sign that it's not being abandoned. If you can show the circumstances where, in fact, as you mentioned, that you couldn't enter the garage of the house for some reason, again, the case can be made to the building inspector that the property's not been abandoned, and even before you get to this point, so that if you can make that case, that it's not abandoned. You can go back and work on the house and improve it and such and such.
What would be the checklist to make sure that it wasn't abandoned?
There's, there's a fair amount of case law on the subject, and that's what the building inspector would have to refer to.
What would be the, what would be the list?
It's difficult. It doesn't come down to a list, it's intentional abandonment. You intend to abandon the property. You haven't been there for years, you haven't paid the taxes, it's in disrepair, it's falling apart. Intentional abandonment.
So part of that would be, you know, not just the grass is tall, the, the taxes would not be paid, is that, is that an A1?
It's a bunch of different factors.
Okay. I just wanted to know.
I don't know, it's a bunch of, it's a hard, it's a hard thing to prove.
Now, what, say you have a, a house that is abandoned currently, and like, just say the roof's all caved in, and it's actually a structural hazard for people in the town. What is this town's current responsibility for that property?
Well, number one, is it abandoned?
Yeah.
So that's a determination. Number two, is it unsafe? If it's an unsafe structure, then me and the fire chief would deem it unsafe.
Okay.
And that's where you see the red X's.
Yeah, exactly. You know, because like, I just went, I was down in Centralea a couple of weeks ago. The town was basically, there was a coal fire that burned underneath it, and basically there's only the five structures still standing in the town. I was just wondering, at what point would the town, would the town ever be responsible, besides putting the X, would they ever take down an abandoned property?
John?
Only if the town foreclosed on the property would we do that.
Okay.
If we got to that point, then we have some serious decisions to make, in a sense of, what are we trying to do with that property? And this makes it more attractive for the town, either to sell it, so that someone else can tear it down and spend their money doing so, so that they can rebuild and put something in there, or if the town wants to get into a more robust policy of it, in essence, improving the property, you know, we've got to make sure about how's the materials on the property, we've got to make, take the building down, all that stuff, and then make it attractive to a potential buyer. Those are possible routes. We've never gotten to that point yet. We may, but we're not in the business, you know, for instance, we foreclosed on a property back in November. We didn't, it's, we didn't, the building is pretty much, even though someone had been living in it, it was pretty derelict condition. Luckily for us, the family's been in the process and should be successfully redeeming the property within the next few weeks. So we didn't have to get into the decision-making of trying to sell it as is, or trying to approve it to in fact then make it more attractive to a potential buyer. It wouldn't be this situation, because in fact, the property is large enough that it meets the zoning requirements. But we're talking more post-stamped lots around the pond, for instance, it's a 5,000 square foot lot, or maybe a thousand foot square building on it. That's where this fault comes into play.
I think that was my point. If on the, like the Barney Estates and whatnot, the pre-existing non-conforming lot that has an abandoned house on it, under the zoning out, also you can't, I believe, you can't deem a property useless. So this wouldn't, I guess I was having trouble between the distinction between a grandfathered lot, which existed prior to '76 zoning, which needed, required an acre, as opposed to, what was the term that was used?
Non-conforming.
Unestablished or...
Non-conforming.
Or, yeah, it's just a pre-existing non-conforming lot, as opposed to deeming it useless, you know? I guess that's where I was having a problem with it. Those lots that are, talk, you know, you're making reference to on the Barney Estates back there by the, they are prior to, the Barney Estates, prior to '76, and they are 5,000 square foot lots, very small, but nevertheless, you can't deem the property useless, even though they don't meet today's requirement, they still, you know, can be built upon, changed if they're, if, under being my definition of a pre-existing non-conforming.
But, but I think what they're saying is, if they are found abandoned, then you just cannot build on it.
Yeah, the word was substandard. I didn't know what exactly it meant by a substandard lot, you know? They're just non-conforming lots, pre-existing.
So you, you couldn't go get a variance and then just build a house? They're saying that they'd be unavailable to use if you don't change this. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking where a use had already occurred, if you, I mean, the building inspector can correct me, but if you've got a lot that's pre-existing, that met the zoning requirements when the subdivision went into existence, and then further met, you know, separate ownership, that type of thing, but wasn't used at all, no house was built, it would still be allowed to build a house without the permit. Now, it might be variances, because despite the acreage or the number of square feet that are there, it may need, a particular structure that someone wants to build on there may require variances, even though it's a billable lot, because it's so small that it may not need a substandard.
We're talking about grandfathered lots. Basically, and, and you correct me if I'm wrong, if it's a grandfathered lot and predates our zoning 1966, then you could basically, I'm not suggesting it, but you could basically ever zero a lot line.
But what he's talking about is that this abandonment, so if you had a house on there and it was abandoned, then you couldn't rebuild that, unless you changed this bylaw.
If it was deemed abandoned. So again, how do we, deeming something abandoned is you, you have to, you have to prove that somebody intentionally had no use for it. They hadn't, no, they weren't coming back, they weren't paying the taxes, like I said, it's fallen down, they had no intention of coming back, and they just let it go. That's the intentional abandonment. But we do have, I believe, some structures in town that probably fall under that criteria. Now, should these substandard lots that have structures on them be made useless to the town? I think that's what this is allowing us to do, is say, no, we can go, we can go to the board and we can have this lot, there's a structure on it, and we got, even though it might be deemed abandoned, we can build one.
To zero a lot line?
No, that's something different.
Well, what is that about?
So that would be a grandfathered lot.
I thought we only could build on the footprint of a house or use the setbacks, like the 3050s.
Again, it depends on what we're talking. If we're talking on the lot that's predated zoning, that's been in the same ownership, and it hasn't been subsidized, to the original plan it was under when it was formed, then that's a grandfathered lot.
So you, so you're saying that the zoning we're changing here is going to just make it allowable for the town to be able to reuse those lots?
I don't know how it's, how it's, well, I don't believe that's actually...
I thought that's how, what you were saying.
Mr. Chairman, if you would allow the news council to provide some advice here?
Sure.
How are you? I'm Amy Quessell from KP Law. It's nice to see you again. With regard to this, there's, we're talking about three different animals, I think, or maybe four. I can't even keep track anymore. But right, right now, what we're talking about, there is a, there is a general law in Massachusetts where if something has been abandoned for more than two years, you cannot reestablish that use. But that, this, what we're talking about right now, and it says it right here in the article, is for non-conforming uses. So we're talking about non-conforming uses. So the seminal case in this is a nursing home was in a residential district, and it was the use, the nursing home use was deemed abandoned, because they left the property, they didn't pay, they shut off the electricity, and they, the number one piece of evidence was the fact that they turned their license into the state. So basically, they weren't functioning as a nursing home anymore. They intentionally abandoned that use. They then came back two and a half years later and said, we're reestablishing our use. And the town said, no, and they took it to court, and the town won, because they found intentional abandonment. So your bylaw currently has that in it. What we're changing here, what's proposed to be changed, is the fact that this won't occur, there won't be this abandonment if it's a single-family house. So if there's a single-family use that is somehow not allowed, that use can be reestablished if it's deemed, that it won't be deemed abandoned, is what this is saying.
But even on these substandard lots that they're talking about, the, the use is legal in that zone for single families.
Right.
So exactly what is it we're protecting here? Because the use of that land is not non-conforming.
So is there any zone which a single-family dwelling is not allowed? Do you know? I can look, actually.
Might be the industrial.
So, I can check real quick. But, but that would be the case, if that's the case.
But I don't think we need to protect anything in the industrial zone, do we?
It sounds like we'd just be protecting...
It's not allowed in, in I, and I too, and it's also special permit in commercial.
No, no, it's conservancy.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, so that would mean that in those three zoning districts, if a, a single-family house hasn't been occupied for two years, there would be no, first, and, and Mr. Selig is correct, that the first step is the building inspector determining it's been abandoned. And Mr. Corelli is correct, also, it's very hard to prove an intentional abandonment. But if that were the case... But if that were the case, and it was determined that it was abandoned, it was intentionally abandoned, that would not be taken into consideration in those zoning districts, and that single-family house could be reestablished.
I thought that's always how it has been.
Well, she's talking about in those districts.
Yeah, not in those.
In those districts, no. Not in the...
Oh, in the...
Industrial and industrial two, which is the dump.
So would we specify that in there?
And the conservancy.
Yep.
The conservancy's by special permit. The others are by right.
So I don't think you have to...
Basically, like if you had a house and something changed and you didn't do anything, as long as you were only using it as a house, you're still all right. If you were using it for something else, you may not be able to still use it for that something else in the future.
Oh, I thought we already had that law.
But we're not protecting the other uses.
So you do have that, but what they're doing is they're carving out an exception for single-family houses.
In industrial, industrial two.
I don't understand why we would carve out the exception for the single-family houses.
Because I think it's prob, I don't, I don't actually know the impetus behind it, but most likely it's because single-family use is the most benign, and people need houses. And I think, I don't think the town wants to be, you know, necessarily stuck with a parcel with a falling-down house when you could maybe reestablish that house into something that's viable.
Gordon Andrews, again, speaking as a private citizen, not as a selectman. Do we know how many houses that this change is supposed to affect? Like, would it propose the article?
I propose the article work on back later this year. Notice because we knew we were going to be getting into more foreclosure situations. We wanted to have the situation where if we did and we had abandoned houses on a property, that we would therefore make these more attractive to a potential buyer if they could then reuse those lots.
Just in the industrial and conservancy, and so the I, I-2, and C.
Well, that's for the time being, yes. There, you know, if, for example, if the use chart changed but this section didn't change, it could encapsulate more. I don't see that happening, but you never know.
Specifically across the street from our Lady of the Lake Church, we have a mixed use. Would that be affected? Would we have a residential on the floor, a commercial on the first floor? Wouldn't it, it would be only single-family dwellings then?
But this is relating to an abandonment.
Right.
And this, it does say, a single-family detached dwelling. So a mixed use wouldn't...
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll go on to Article 7. See if the town will vote to amend Chapter 167-3, definitions for multifamily development, a development of three or more dwelling units on a single lot of land under one ownership of not less than 10 acres in size. To a multifamily development of three or more dwelling units on a single lot of land under one ownership of not less than 10 acres in size in accordance to Section 167, 12A. In multifamily dwelling, a building intended and designed to be occupied by more than one family living independently in separate units in any residential structure containing more than one room for cooking facility to a multifamily dwelling a building intended and designed to be occupied by more than two families living independently or separate units. Discussion?
I'm more or less asking the question, since this is, this was sponsored by the planning board. Is there a problem that needs to be solved, or how does this solve it? Or is it a situation that's where they improve something or benefits from it?
You ready to answer?
I'm not sure. We propose this?
Yeah, submit through trial or through the planning board.
I don't remember discussing this.
Yeah, I don't think you really have that, like...
So change laws.
All right, so it's actually proposing two changes in the one article.
I think it was cleaning up something, but I think Carlos wrote these and sent them in. Because, I mean, I just joined them, I'm not trying to change them.
Yeah, I'll try and figure it out first.
So basically, just changing two different definitions, making sure that under multifamily development that there is an addition of Section 167. We're bringing back to 167, 12A, which shows basically all the conditions.
What about the fact that we're not supposed to be changing any bylaws during litigation, or is litigation, oh, litigation is pending with the September 18th thing that we just got? So I'd like to decline having any conversation about it.
Charlie?
I'm just asking, is true that you can submit a document for September 18th in terms of, and so I don't know what the document is or what the...
I don't know either.
Am I looking at the wrong here? Okay, don't get the wrong... Yeah, September 18th, two thousand, oh, received, two thousand. I was thinking that that was a court stamp. Excuse me. I thought it was a court stamp because we just got it and it was new. So that's why I thought it was...
But I don't know if it is relevant to what you're all talking about.
It's just about multi-families.
Well, who is it from? And what's it about?
I was just answering any questions. It's from the hearing, from tonight.
But today's the 19th, so I'm not quite sure, I'm confused as to what the document is. Somebody originated the doc.
It was received today and as far as what I'm looking at.
Somebody offered the document. Who's it from?
It was in my folder, my green folder from the town.
Who's it been?
It's just all of the stuff that was received today. I don't know if it was received by her or whatever, but I'm just, if we're... From Julianne, sorry. I always want to call her Alana because of the, that's why I...
Are you done?
Yeah. Bring it to us, right?
It's, I've, everyone got a copy of it.
Yeah.
We probably didn't have time to review, rework it as much. Information in the past, it's today, but...
Yeah.
I believe it's from, it's in regards to the amended state petition from Drowin, Tachio, Morgan, that was drafted, stated September 17.
All right, some, some later if I can get a copy of that.
Absolutely, I can give you a copy right now.
I think my question is more on regard to, are we not supposed to be talking about bylaw changes at this time, I think that for these kinds of bylaws? Am I not understanding that correctly?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was trying to...
Oh, no, I was just putting it out there to the room, not to direct it towards anybody in particularly, but...
I missed the question, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Can we have you?
Are we not supposed to be talking about bylaw changes to do with multifamily during this time?
Litigation.
Right. I don't think you're foreclosed from doing it pursuant to any kind of statute because zoning bylaw will take, a zoning bylaw will take effect on the day that it is, the day that it's adopted, so town meeting vote. And any kind of grandfathering, et cetera, will, takes effect whenever you opened up your 48, Section 5 hearing. I'm not sure if that was tonight, or was it tonight? So any grandfathering would take effect tonight. But the litigation would be, the litigation would be, would go back to the bylaw that was in effect that's being so-called litigated over.
Oh, okay, because I think a little while ago, were you telling us? Is that what I understood, that we weren't supposed to be talking or changing bylaws? Is that what you stated?
I told you that in May of 2018, when the question was raised, the planning board, whether the planning board should revise the bylaws that would affect pending litigation. It was the planning board's position as reflected in their minutes of May 3, 2018, that they thought it inappropriate at that time to do that because of concerns regarding taking sides. And the point I made was that nothing has changed, the litigation remains pending. So I was simply repeating the planning board's position in 2018 when the issue was raised.
And again, like I said, I don't think that there's any statute or anything foreclosing you from doing this. However, this is, it is in litigation and it is quite, I mean, I've only, I just obviously got involved tonight, but I have reviewed all the minutes and I've seen as many meetings as I can online. And I think, for lack of a better term, it's pretty contentious. So it's, you know, it is up to you guys. Like I said, you are not foreclosed by any statute that I know of. And I don't, I did read the judge's order numerous times and I don't see anything in the judge's order saying anything about that, so...
I see why I asked, no.
No, no, I mean, and if that's the position that you took in 2018, you might just want to continue, continue on with that position. I would also love to take the opportunity to possibly to work with you guys on those bylaw changes because, as you'll hear later on in the meeting during the next hearing, that I do have some concerns with how definitions match the rest of the bylaw, things like that. So, but again, it's up to you guys.
Okay. So what's the feeling of the board?
I didn't think we had any determination about it. We're just going to take in some information?
Yeah. See?
Move on to Article 8.
Okay. Move on to Article 8. See if the town will vote to amend Chapter 167, 72, specific use from the complete parcel must be under ownership of the developer before a special permit is granted, to changing it to the complete parcel must be under ownership of the develop, must be under the ownership of the developer or evidence secured interest in the purchase rights of the included parcels must be provided before the special permit is granted.
Yeah, that one, yeah, I think that one makes sense because that one just allows someone to understand what the potential for a piece of property is before they buy it. Making someone go through and purchase a property before they have any idea. I don't see how that helps anyone.
Yeah, it's also part of the documents in real estate that you have a subject to permit.
Discussion? Article 9, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 167-10, general density, from be a dwelling unit, a dwelling, building, or any structure thereafter constructed or altered in any district shall not be located on a lot having less than the minimum requirements and no more than one dwelling shall be built upon any single lot except as herein provided. To be a dwelling, building, or structure thereafter constructed or altered in any district shall not be located on a lot having less than the minimum requirements. No more than one dwelling unit shall be built upon any single lot except herein provided. Each building must be constructed on an individual lot for multifamily development in accordance with 167-12A. Discussion?
I always think they'll tell when they reference something else and you got to figure out what the effect it would have. But I think 12A is the regular multifamily regulations, right?
Well, it's right, this is what was, this is what it is.
Yeah, but it...
From those two.
That's what I'm saying, so it doesn't reference 167, 12A as it sits. It will only reference it after the change.
Yeah.
Okay, discussion? Charlie?
The reason for the changes...
To clarify it.
But how does it do that? What?
It says here and after, accepted.
But I mean, in the sense of how, what shape of this do, I'll clarify. What would be accomplished?
I believe that these were proposed by Holist members not here, so I'm not sure that any of us can really speak for that, but I wish he was here to explain that.
If I may, if I may, Mr. Chairman. It actually, I think the wrong section might be referenced. It actually, so it says each building must be constructed on an individual lot for multifamily developments in accordance with Section 167-12A. 167-12A does not mention anything about an individual lot.
That's what I'm saying, when they reference something...
Yeah, I think the reference is wrong. And also, again, I think that this isn't necessarily, this won't necessarily help clear up the issue that we have between the definition and another section in the bylaw.
Okay, but is this a general density or bylaw that encompasses the whole bylaw, the whole set?
No, this, this will only, when it says in accordance with 167, 12A, 167, 12A, it provides...
No, I mean, how it currently is said, sorry, not the other. How it's currently written here is that all encompassing of our bylaws because it says, a dwelling, building, or any structure hereafter constructed or altered in any district shall not be located on a lot having less than the minimum requirements and no more than one dwelling shall be built upon any single lot except as in hereafter provided.
Right, so that, the way that it's written now doesn't necessarily, I... Right, so that, the way that it's written now, doesn't necessarily, I understand why the change, why there was an attempt at the change, it's because, right now, the way that it's written doesn't provide for multifamily developments, because it says that "no more than one dwelling shall be built upon any single lot."
Can you say that again?
So, right now, the way that it's written does not provide for multifamily development, but your bylaw does, so what, the attempt is to try and say, you can only have one dwelling on a lot, except when it's a multifamily development, and then go on, but it doesn't really say that, because it's referencing the wrong section?
Yeah, Carlos isn't here, so I don't know.
So if there wasn't reference, it would be fine?
Yeah, but if it wasn't reference, it would be worthless.
No, it wouldn't.
No, because the stricter of the law.
And what I'm saying is, is if you take that part out of his change, the new change in the room.
If you read the next article, I think it makes more sense.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question? So, just for clarification, 167-10 is general density, 167-12 is specific density, is that correct or not?
I believe so, yes.
Yes, it is. No, it doesn't.
How would the general density of the town change from that?
I need the section and put it here. This is what he's changing, twelve.
Oh, the next section's going to change, okay. No, I don't, I don't see it in ten. Oh, I thought you said ten. Oh, Article ten. I'm sorry, I was looking at 167-10. Okay. Sorry. That's okay. So the end of Article nine actually is referencing that? It is, but it's not, it is, but... 167-12A, which is... Right, multifamily.
Right.
But I think what this is trying to do, and again, I don't know, but I think what this is trying to do is to clear up 7D, and by the way that it's written, it's not clearing up 7D, because it's just mimicking the language of 7D. But I haven't looked, I mean, I've looked at the other one, but not in conjunction with this.
So, check, Mr. Chairman, I have a question, please.
Yep.
I have to direct it to town council. If this was to go forward, would this affect the specific density use?
I think she's trying to figure that out right now by reading the next bylaw, right?
Yeah. Yes, I'm sorry. So, it's not going to, I don't think it's going to fix the problem that we have, I really don't, because, so, excuse me, if you look, if you look at, just for example, if you look at 167-12A1, it says "the number of units in a multifamily development shall not exceed the number of acres in the parcel on which they are to be built." And then you have "each building must be constructed on an individual lot for multifamily development in accordance with section 167-12A," which mimics the language in 167-7DA. So, what we need to do is, we need to figure out...
The next article changes that.
So, I guess, why are we putting this article in if the next article is changing that?
You're reading the old article A, right?
Right.
If you look at the next change, that's...
But it's the same?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the older one.
Yeah, and then it's two is after that.
So it says "the number of units in a multifamily development shall not exceed the number of contiguous upland acres in the parcel on which they are to be built," as defined by section 167-10N, which is just minimum lot area, so that doesn't, it still doesn't help.
If you read three.
I mean, you'd still have the issue of multiple buildings on one lot.
Right, so, and then when you read, when you read three, it makes one confusing.
Right, I think this is why there was a proposal of a bylaw committee in not going through and trying to change different things, pieces now.
And to be quite honest with you, that's how bylaw, that's how zoning bylaws are created, and it's, the only way to actually avoid that is to do a complete recodification of your zoning bylaw, but, so, there's no zoning bylaw out there that I can honestly say that I understand every single thing, it's, they're all, because they're changed at different town meetings, things get confusing and there's conflicts, and that's probably why we have...
I think with the last, sorry, with the last meeting, I think people don't realize is that a lot of these were adopted because we had to adopt them and we took them from different towns. Not each one of these bylaws that's in the town is because a bunch of angry people sat here and came up with it. There's not a lot of passion behind all of these, is what I'm trying to say, it's not like these were all hot, some of them were just adopted because we needed to adopt them. So to think that they're sacred, I don't think is correct.
Well, the town votes on it, so...
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, they're not all, when they had to...
All I ever, you know, mean is that, I'm here to represent the town and the people of what they bought a house at, remember, we got into that discussion, so when you sell a person a house, and you say you have certain things that, I'm not even going to get into specifics, but certain things that happen, like, let's go benign, the right to file, there's a sign in a lot of people's, in the beginning of a town nowadays, like if you have the right to file, which is supposed to protect the 61A, and so when you go into a town, you hear, like, a Realtor is supposed to designate all of these things that a town has as bylaws, as far as when you're selling somebody something, so they have an idea of what they are buying, and they are buying that. So, the reason that there is the, the people at town meeting need to have a two-thirds vote, correct, to change a bylaw, is to protect the people of the town and create, they bought into these bylaws. So that's, that's the big deal about it, you know what I mean?
Do we need to schedule maybe, what's our timing on this? I'm thinking, do we schedule maybe a little bit?
These are the articles that are going to town meeting.
No, no, but like, as far as being able to sit down and have, have a council actually, we will get, like, have the council look at it, review it, give their opinion, and then maybe talk through it.
Yeah, as long as the selectmen give us permission to get town council, we can have town council with all of them.
Because I think right now, rather than, rather than being, I want to say, I'm okay with putting, you know, maybe council on the spot, I don't think that's getting the best, that would not be the best use of purpose. But as far as timing goes, I get that that's also an issue too, as far as what would need to be required in order to, if, for example, if something does need to get changed as far as where it goes, will there be time to change that before town meeting?
No.
So what's here is here.
You can make little changes, but you can't make big changes.
It would have to be an amendment on town meeting for...
And it couldn't be huge, because the people have to be notified as to what basically is going to be brought up. I mean, the other way to do it is to put these in and make more changes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I said the way to do it is we could put these in and make more changes, or we vote to them, they get voted down, and we make other changes later. Either way, the other.
I just have a question, I'm just reading all this, and what is the major difference between multifamily apartment and a multifamily development, like land-wise?
That's actually on the litigation at this time.
Oh.
You're asking what the definition is?
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out the difference, because I was just trying to see why we were, it was going from one to the other, you know, it was going to be like another complex going in.
Well, I think that was a...
Like an apartment complex, say you had like...
I think that's, if you're looking at the one that shows the chart.
Yeah, I was just looking at that.
For the special permit?
Yeah.
It was just calling it out as so that there's a separate line for that.
But it may be simple, multifamily dwelling would be up to two, where, when you're talking about a multifamily development, then you would be talking, either one building with more than two apartments, or multiple buildings. So whereas a multifamily, I believe, covers up to two, so if you're only just talking two residences on one building, I believe that would fall into multifamily dwelling, and then multifamily development would be one building with more than two, or being split up so that there would be more than two dwellings in any building that was built. I don't know if that helps at all.
Yeah, I just have to read a little bit more, I just wanted, because I didn't know if there was a size difference, you know, there's a lot sizes between apartments, multifamily, apartments and multifamily developments, you know, like any grid wise.
But so, what's the difference between a multifamily and like a duplex? duplex is two families, multifamily is just two families, I'm confused.
A duplex is two families.
Now you got context.
Multifamily is still group?
I'm glad we all agree this is confusing.
One, a duplex specifically states that they have to be side by side, I don't know if that helps, but it does.
Or it'd be two units.
Two units side by side, so it can't be one on top of another.
And it can't be more than two?
But a two-family could be one on top of the other.
But that's not the definition, that's why, that's why I want to really make a lot of changes here. Two-family, two-family building designed with separate dwelling units, side by side, separated by a firewall, so that's a duplex.
Yeah, I see we're making a lot of progress. So is that Article nine? Move on to Article 10?
Nice.
Who's that? Article 10. Multifamily development. One, the number of units in a multifamily development shall not exceed the number of acres in the parcel to which it's to be built. Two, eighty percent of the total parcel tested on a 200 by 200-foot grid must be found to be percalable by the Board of Health, the minimum parcel size should be 10 acres, no unit shall have any more than two and a half stories, which contains any amount of living space. This limitation will be enforced by a covenant with the purchaser of each unit. The minimum front setbacks shall be 75 feet, the minimum rear will be 100, and there should be 100 feet between the two buildings. In addition, the requirement for a 30-foot side yard between the development and the adjacent property shall be maintained as a vegetated buffered area, free of parking, any structures, and any change in its natural state shall require approval by special permitting and grant, special permitting granting authority. Minimum residential area, no multifamily housing, whether condo or rental, shall be erected, constructed, remodeled, or altered so that the lowest level, i.e. ground floor or equivalent, living space per dwelling unit, contains less than 750 square feet. Seven, fire protection in a condo development, every multifamily development, whether condo or rental, built after 1984, shall install an automatic fire detection system in each building, the system shall not include the smoke detector system unless so directed by the state building code or general laws. The automatic fire detection system shall be wired to the fire station, and the alarm notification system shall be compliant to the present alarm notification system, all expenses of the installation, including the tie-in at the fire station, shall be borne by the developer. The system shall be approved by the fire chief before construction is started on the site. The maintenance of the system shall be the responsibility of the owner or the condo association if any. Be, every multifamily development, whether condo rental, built after 1984, shall have a hydrant which is capable of supplying the required fire flow plus 50%. The water main shall not be less than eight inches, and the system shall be looped with no dead ends. All fire hydrants shall be set 500 feet apart within the development. Every multifamily development, whether condo, condominium, or rental, shall supply adequate space in front of each building for the fire apparatus to approach the building, this open space shall be kept open at all times, if space is blocked by a vehicle, it shall be towed to the owner's expense. This order to tow may be given by either police or the fire. Changing that to the following, the number of units in a multifamily development shall not exceed the number of contiguous uplands in the parcel on which they are to be built, as defined by section 167-10M. The percolation testing shall be performed and witnessed by the Board of Health in accordance with 310 CMR 15, Title V, demonstrating that the proposed area for the primary reserve sewer systems, leachant areas are suitable for development. The minimum parcel size for a multifamily development shall be 10 acres with 110 feet of frontage prior to development, each lot contained within a multifamily building shall have a minimum of 40,000 square foot in area in accordance with section 167-10M, and 150 feet of frontage. No building shall have more than two and a half, two and one-half stories containing, it's the same as the other provision, the minimum front yard shall be 75 feet, the minimum area should be 100 feet, the minimum between the buildings should be 75 feet. A minimum 30-foot undisturbed vegetated buffer free from parking and structures shall be provided for the development of the adjacent properties, any changes in its natural state shall be required approval of the planning board as by the site plan review. Minimum residential floor area of no multifamily, whether condo or rental, shall be erected, constructed, or remodeled, or altered, so that the smallest part contains less than 750 square feet of living space excluding the areas reserved for parking garages. The stormwater management system shall be designed in accordance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Handbook and shall meet the Massachusetts Stormwater Management standards as defined in 310 CMR 10.56K, and fire protection is the same as the other. Okay, discussion?
We might have to go through them each individually, but number two, I think, is a good idea, which really affects that, the way that they pre-perk all the lots. Which really affects that, the way that they pre-perk all the lots.
No, actually, actually, one is going to take care of that because one talks about the contiguous upland, so it's away from that.
Yeah.
Trying to perk that grid, because that was about the upland on the lot.
Yeah, but I think if you took out the math with the 80%, right? Then you would only be parking areas, areas that were proposed to actually have the sewer systems there.
That's what this is.
That's what I'm saying. So as of right now, you have to perk that grid, whether you're going to put work in there or not. And then you have to get 80% of all of those, whether you propose work there or not, have to pass.
That's the old.
That's the old. The new way, you would only actually have to perk and pass the areas that you are interested in.
Proposed.
Because we're taking care of it with the contiguous upland.
I don't see how that is.
Because the number shall not exceed the contiguous upland in acres in the parcel on which they have to be built. The other grid was all about upland. Because back in, back then, they, the only way they used to, to prove that it was upland was to perk it. So we get rid of that grid.
Yeah, but I don't see how-
We have to do that grid. Because today, we use the standard of upland, that they go out and they do their wetland flagging.
So if we don't have the change, then we still go back to the perking 80% of areas that you don't even need?
Correct. So that was to try to clean up that kind of crazy grid with all the perking.
Mr. Chairman, question on Number 1. Number of units in a multifamily development shall not exceed the number of contiguous uplands in the parcel on which they are built, as defined by 167-10m. Multifamily developments, under 12K, and isn't 67-10 general? So are we going from specific to general again?
Well, M talks about the wetlands as defined in, in Mass. General Law 131.
Well, what's 160-10, what's it in?
Dimensions and density regulations, general density regulations.
So general, and if I am on multifamily developments, which are the specific, density correct?
We don't know, right? Isn't that under litigation?
I'm asking a question that doesn't have to do with litigation. I'm just asking if it's, if the reference is specific.
To me, general seems to, general means it encompasses all. That's really why it says general.
Oh, so what you're saying is multifamily development will already be proposed and would be defined-
Differently than general?
It's a specific, it's a specific density, it's not a general density.
The whole town is under general density.
I'm not going to get into logistics of it. I'm just telling you that we're reading two different densities. That's all I'm telling you.
There's one.
Because, all right, so you're saying that the multifamily has to adhere to the specific density already?
We have a specific density specifically for multifamily developments specifically that is separate from the general density.
How?
As far as I see it.
Okay.
How is general density not encompassing of the whole town in all of the uses?
I'm just asking you if we're mixing specific and general.
No, I'm asking you that question. I'm asking you that question. How does general not apply to the whole entire town? When it says general, it means everything.
For special permits, you can have a general and a specific, and it says you have a general or a specific.
It's still asked to get a special permit with the general density as the main.
You compose the question to Town Council.
We read it that it comes under the general density as well.
I just want to make something more confusing.
Oh, absolutely. Charlie?
Yeah, I mean, what you've got is 167-10 general density regs. And then, under 167-12, you have density regulations for specific uses. One of the specific uses is multifamily development. I guess maybe the question is, do all this, the general use, all the general density regulations and the specific ones for multifamily, or they all apply to multifamily, or just the multifamily density regs apply to multifamily? And not the general ones?
The reason that I would say that is because there's a bylaw that states that the stricter of the law is always.
Apparently, this says if it's applicable.
It, well, I would say density would say that it's stricter. If it's referring to density, you go stricter. Or anything. It's not, it doesn't even want to get specific.
All right, let's keep it through the chairman. Charlie?
When you checked with the Board of Health about the proposed change in Number 2, what was your reaction in terms of how this could change, what possibilities would occur for perccable or non-perccable land? And how that would change the ability to do developments based on that?
What do you mean?
Well, you're changing the perking requirements. I would assume that since that's going to involve, in fact, this Board of Health has referenced right there, that the planning board, when it proposed this change, checked in with the Board of Health and said, "We're proposing this change. How is this going to affect how perking is done, what's perccable, what's not perccable, what's going to, how much development's going to be allowed under this language in this bylaw versus the change proposed?"
Well, we're doing that right now, tonight. You're having to hear it.
Did you go straight to the Board of Health?
No.
Well, why not?
Because we did.
Okay. Well, I think you'd watch it because you want to get information from the Board of Health specifically saying what's going to happen if you make this change.
We have a member from the Board of Health here. Is there any comment?
My comment is, I think the disregulation, the proposed regulation is ridiculous. There was no, no, the Board of Health has never been questioned as to the, whether or not 80% or 90% or 100% of the lot should be perccable. And I think that should have been brought to the attention of the board. So I agree with Mr. Sealy. I do have one question, though, Mr. Chairman. In the Section 3, you've got a minimum lot size with 110 feet of frontage, 10 acres. And then it goes on to say you need a minimum 40,000 square feet based on the Section 167-10m and 150 feet of frontage. That's very confusing. So how much frontage do you need in a multifamily dwelling or building? Because you've got a development, you've got a building. I, I think the point that everybody's trying to make is whoever developed these regulations, okay, did them wrong. And you're not putting the town in a good position by trying to either force this onto the town or even bring it to town meeting. You know, I agree that these bylaws need to be codified. We need professionals to come in and help us with these bylaws. This is ridiculous. That's my end of comment.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, again, Courtney Andrews speaking as a private citizen. I think the reason why you see this is because we had Plan Use Council Huxham give his opinion, and it wasn't listened to for, for whatever reason, where the general density applied as well as specific density applied. So when both conditions apply, it's very easy to come to an understanding of what's required. But when somebody says that, well, if the specific density doesn't say anything, it means there isn't anything there. And I think that's why there's an issue, because it was read previously for different, for different petitions in the past that it applied, that the general applied as well as the specific. Then, for whatever reason, that interpretation changed. And I think what you're seeing is the bylaws that are being recommended be changed for future projects are trying to clarify what's required, that the general density and specific density are required.
So are you just going to be, are you going to change them just for the development, or are you going to change them for the apartment? And on the dwelling also?
This is multifamily, so it's, whatever this applies to is a multifamily.
Okay. I just didn't know, like, you had certain bases.
It's not going to affect single-family homes.
Oh, no, I'm talking about single families. I'm talking about multifamily dwellings or multifamily apartment.
These are just proposed changes. The town has to vote.
Yeah. Oh, no, no, I'm just-
Just want to be clear on that.
Yeah.
Yes.
All I'm just saying is, you know.
Yeah, I just want to say something sitting here as a resident. I can't even imagine what this discussion's going to be like at town meeting. And quite frankly, I don't think you're ready. I think you need to wait till spring. I can't imagine what it's going to be like, and the yents are just all over the place. And I don't think you're ready.
Charlie?
Two points. One, previous speaker referenced it, Trey Huxham. I don't know if Trey Huxham recommended the change, for instance, on the percolation. I'm not saying he did or didn't. I have no idea. So I have no idea where this came from. And also, just simply that, I understand that this is a hearing and that you're all listening to this, but these changes came out of a planning board needed and are being brought by the planning board to this hearing. And I appreciate the fact that the planning boards are listening to the residents. But at some point, that, when you were originating these texts, somebody said, "This is a good idea. We should be doing this." And, but I, and I understand that the primary author isn't here, but other members of the planning board were there. Other members of the planning board, in fact, said, "Yes, we should bring these to the public hearing with these changes." And I haven't heard yet of the reason, for instance, on the percolation, why that changed along with the others, including the proposed.
I did say why that was being changed, because right now, the percolation relates to a grid of 200 by 200 square of the land. And it's, to go out and perk it at 80%, you've got to do a perk in each one of those grids. And the reason they did it was because they didn't have contiguous upland when they wrote that bylaw. That was to try to prove that it was upland. Now we have wetland delineation, which determines what that is. So if you have contiguous upland, then it's, then it's upland. Go ahead.
Is all upland perccable?
No.
Okay. Well, then we're changing, in fact, the ability of development.
So the-
Okay.
And, but I don't know whether it's a good thing or a bad thing. I'm not sure. Again, you know, if the intent, in fact, is to change the ability to develop, if that's where it comes down to, use that benefit.
So here, here's the problem that we have as a planning board, okay? We have five members. We sit there and we try to come up with something. This is why we need participation like this tonight at the hearing. If we had that participation at our meetings, then, you know, the Board of Health is welcome to come, the selectmen are welcome to come. Every board is welcome to come. We put an agenda out, just like the selectmen put out an agenda. If people want to go to it, they go to it, right? We have that discussion there. We don't want to make any changes to the bylaw as a committee. We'd like to hear it from the people. Now, the people sit here tonight, and you can criticize everything that we've done, and we take that on. That's fine. But you, I, I've gotten it from Charlie. I was on a bylaw study committee, and the bylaw study committee was told not to touch the bylaws. And then, out of the selectman's office, they turn around and they change the bylaws. And I asked him about it, and he says, "That's because nobody else changed them." Oh, nobody else changed them. Well, you said that you couldn't change them. So, you know, we're getting different feedback from the selectman's office, and basically, we're a little fed up with it. We are here. If somebody has something to offer, we're here to hear it. I've, I've offered, every time we have a meeting, I offer the public a chance to come in and speak. That's what we're here for. We're not trying to force anything down anybody's throat. If, if the public doesn't want this, that's fine. I think there needs to be some changes. I'd rather have some participation, but if we don't have it, we'll do it, just like Charlie told me. Nobody's doing it, so we'll do it. That's why we took it on. Charlie?
Well, I'm very glad that the planning board, in fact, is performing one of its functions. The multi, the bylaw committee had an opportunity for many, many months, even before the discussion about whether you need to or should move forward on the multifamily sections of the bylaws, to do anything. There are many, many, many parts of the bylaws that need to be changed and brought up to date. But for whatever reason, the members of the bylaw committee, for whatever reasons, and I don't know whether they unanimously decided we're not meeting, or what happened, but nothing happened. And in fact, some of the changes that are being proposed through the Boris Selectman have nothing to do with multifamily. So if you're leaving, you know, laying the blame on me for nothing happening because-
No, I'm not blaming you, Charlie. Not at all. The bylaw study committee was formed, there was only two members that took the initiative to go get sworn in. That was it. Nobody else got sworn in, nobody else had, Alan Dees and myself are the only ones that got sworn in. Everybody else can sit back and say, "Oh, nothing happened." Well, that's right, nothing happened, because with two people, you don't have a committee.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was sworn in.
Um, I checked with the town clerk. Maybe you need to check with her. She said no.
No, I think she's wrong, but I'll check with her. But we couldn't get a quorum in any of it.
We could have. I, I don't, I-
I disagree, but let's-
Here, number one is, I don't think that a bylaw study committee should be formed just out of the people that are on the committees. And I'm not, I'm not criticizing you.
And that was part of the problem, Mr. Chairman.
That's right.
We couldn't get any participation.
That's right.
One of the, one of the charges was to have some people from the general public, and we could not get anyone.
Correct.
So I'll go along with you in that aspect of it.
And that's, that's my whole point.
I never knew there was a committee.
People that want change, if they don't want change, maybe that's why they're not coming forward.
When it was being formed, I never heard anybody say that it was being formed. It wasn't publicly-
Well, we advertise it down on the board. You know, we put it out there.
It should be in, in, on the electronic board.
It was.
Yeah, but it gets to a point where you got constructive notice. We can only go so far. If people wanted to be involved, that information was there.
People don't know. Look for what they don't know is there.
All right, we're going to move forward with the hearing.
You know.
I don't even know what section I did.
You were just finished.
11. To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 167-28, Site Plan Review. From no permit shall be granted for any commercial, industrial business, industrial apartment, multifamily dwelling, municipal or school building, or public utility structure, and none of the above classes' structures shall be constructed or externally enlarged, and no such use shall be expanded or established in an existing building or on a lot therefore used for such purposes except in the conformity with the site plan bearing the endorsement of approval from the planning board. Said site plan shall show owner of record, location, zone boundaries, easements, and other legal restrictions, exact locations of the buildings on a lot with side, front, rear dimension, lot dimensions, topography, adjacent public ways, locations of off-street parking, lighting, utility systems, surface drains, traffic flow, location and nature of open space with the specific notation as the landscaping locus, and other details determined necessary by the planning board. The planning board may waive, substantially reduce the site plan submission requirements for projects having limited or minor impact consistent with the purpose of this chapter. Changing it to, no permit shall be granted for any commercial, industrial business, industrial, institutional apartment, multifamily dwelling, multifamily development, municipal or school building, public utility structure, and none of the above classes of structures shall be constructed or externally enlarged, and no such use shall be expanded or established in an existing building or lot not here to use for such purpose except in the conformity with the site plan bearing an endorsement of the approval of the planning board. Said site plan shall show the owner of record, location, zone boundaries, easements, other legal restrictions, exact location of the buildings on a lot with side, with side, front, rear dimensions, lot dimensions, topography, adjacent public ways, location of off-street parking, lighting, utility systems, subsurface drain, traffic flow, location and nature of open space with specific notations as the landscape and locus plan and other deemed necessary by the planning board. The planning board may waive or substantially reduce site plan submission requirements for projects having limited or minor impact consistent with the purpose of this chapter. for projects having limited or minor impact consistent with the purpose of this chapter.
Mr. Chairman, can you just, in a nutshell, tell me what the difference is between these two chapters?
You're adding...
If the planning board is proposing this...
You're just adding multifamily developments.
Adding multifamily developments. We're trying to clarify the language. We have things in one...
Again, I just want to ask the planning board that since the... This language is very ambiguous. You've got pending litigation on multifamily, but we have to recommend the article that these things should be...
Whether we have pending litigation or not, it's up for a discussion.
Okay, just comment that I'm going to make.
And we're just adding that in there, so, I mean...
So you're targeting multifamily in this particular section?
No, we're trying to put things in that were omitted before.
If, Mr. Chairman, if that is the purpose of the article, I would suggest so... The article states multi-dwelling, and it should say, it should match the definition, which is multifamily dwelling. That's a minor change.
Yeah, it could be a typo.
Okay, so it should be multifamily dwelling.
And then you added multifamily development, but it's multi-dwelling, and it's been bothering me for a while.
Multi-dwelling?
It should say multifamily. It's just missing a word.
We don't need anymore of that.
Family instead of dwelling. Thank you. I believe that's a change we can modify at town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, just I think what you want to do is, and I'm trying to request, well, to correct me on this, I think what you want to do is just get it into the board. As opposed to making the amendment on town meeting floor, get it on the board as what we want to do now.
We can get that changed on the board?
Yeah, the board's still open until Tuesday.
Okay.
As we talked about in a couple of the other earlier articles, I think there was general agreement that, for instance, eliminate the brackets. We need to, I think there's a number 12, I think you all mentioned, or the other one article, we needed to insert because I was missing.
Right.
So, change like that, it's minor enough that your hearing, this public hearing, is not dramatically different. The hearing requirement is going to be met, even though we're making a change right now that's minor enough at this meeting.
It seems like it would make it less confusing, so we don't have to pre...
Okay, any other discussion? Article 12, to see if the town will vote to approve the following amendment. Chapter 167-11, table of dimensions and densities. I think everybody can see the first one. We're going to change it to no new dwelling or attached addition there to, to be attached in addition to an existing dwelling shall be closer than 30 feet from either side of the lot line. And then we're changing the number two from 100 feet down to 75 feet. Yeah, we're just changing number two there. From, it now is 100 feet between the buildings down to 75 feet.
Mr. Chairman, there is also a change where it says, shall be, the first one, the original says, shall be closer than 30 feet from either side of the lot line to 30 feet from either side lot line, which is the correct change.
Did it change the wordage?
He's clarifying that.
It's much better the way that you guys proposed it.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask, as the chair of the finance committee, if one or more of the members would be available for our meeting, which is posted for October 7th, when we make recommendations on these articles?
What time?
It's 7:00 PM posting. I'll send an email, but I just wanted to put the date out there. Monday, October 7th. I think we're going to have a meeting this Monday, but that'll be too soon, so I was wondering if one or more of you would be willing to attend our meeting on Monday, October 7th at 7:00 PM in this room to help clarify, as we'll have to provide recommendations in advisory capacity.
October 7th?
Yes.
At 7?
We'll send a follow-up email, too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll take the public's comments and use those in discussion. That it for discussion?
Does the finance committee take into consideration what the public said tonight?
I'm going to, we'll have the recording from this, but that's why I also wanted, just because the other members couldn't be here tonight, so I wanted to make sure that we'll get all of the information. And also, the public's always welcome to come to thin committees, and that's already posted, too. So please, if anyone is interested in coming to thin committees, we're still welcome to
Okay, I believe that concludes the public hearing on the bylaws. Do we have a motion?
Motion to close the hearing on the bylaw changes.
Okay, the motion is a second?
Second. I'll set that.
Okay, all on table? I think we took care of the other business. We did the bills. Amy has to read her copy of the...
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to.
Yes, I had a chance to read it, yeah.
That's just the notice that you received.
I haven't even seen my email. I've been out on the road all day.
All right, you can do that now.
Okay. So I think that concludes the other business we had. Okay. You guys want to do your hearing?
Change yourself.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to take a five-minute break first. That's all right with that?
Yeah.
Cool. I'm just going to do a five-minute break before we stop.
Amanda states site plan modification, time being 9:16.
Motion is a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're going to continue the public hearing. First thing being...
So, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith. Before you, you perhaps deliberately talked about continuing the hearing to afford you an opportunity to seek guidance from town council and potentially state ethics to address the request for recusal. The only reason I'm interrupting you is that my concern is that the board perhaps not deliberate tonight, so that in the eventuality that the other member can attend, that he has the ability to participate if you ultimately choose to recuse yourself. So I don't know if it's appropriate just to talk about the request for continuance of the town council present.
I'm not sure what you're advising me to do.
I don't remember.
Don't talk about anything except for continuance.
Okay, me personally?
Everybody.
Because once I'm excluded, they can't go on?
So, the, under the Mullen rule, you are allowed to miss one meeting that has, where testimony has been taken. And there's certain things that you have to do. You have to watch the video, if there is one, read the minutes if not, and then you have to sign an affidavit with the town clerk, saying that you've done that. So the missing member who was not here on September 5th, that testimony was taken on September 5th, obviously. But if no testimony is taken tonight, he can still participate in the next meeting, provided he Mullenizes for September 5th's meeting.
Okay, now, if we continue to the fifth, that we pass 45 days, is it an extension?
Yes, we are. So the 45 days is up on the 26th. So we are proposing, if at all possible with your schedules, we're proposing Wednesday, the 25th, to have a meeting just for this hearing, to continue it to Wednesday, the 25th. And then, we are within the 45 days, and if for some reason the ethics commission advises you not to recuse yourself, perhaps the missing member could then sit, and we would still have a quorum.
Okay, so would it be profitable right now, just try to take a motion to...
If your schedules can do that, yes, that would be...
I have a question. What happens with the 45 days? Like, what is that all about?
It's constructive approval.
So, you mean, it automatically is?
So whatever has been requested is granted. So it's the same as when you have an A&R plan in front of you and 45 days has expired, or if you have a subdivision plan in front of you, and depending on definitive or preliminary plan, but they all have constructive approval associated with them. Those are longer, they're 180 days, but, so you have a time to act, is what it is. And so, under your bylaw, and this is very common, so, so under your bylaw section, actually, I have it. What is, it's 28, and it's 28D. 28D specifically says, failure of the planning board to act within 45 days of the filing of the application shall be deemed approval of the application and site plan.
I look at that as just a way of us kind of like stop something and block it and not act at all.
Yeah, although I would argue to say that none of this is actually, you know, we didn't know until tonight that we were going to actually, well...
It's 45 days from like the original filing.
From August 12th, when he filed his application.
Amanda, I want to ask you a question.
But you see what I'm saying? Like, this isn't our fault that we're not acting. It's not like we're putting up a wall right now. Where, you know what I mean?
No, but this is just there for protection from that. You know what I mean? That's why that there's a time limit at all.
Yes, I understand, but it's not like our fault, so...
No, but the thing is, is that if we're up against that deadline, we can still do different things. I could not go at all. We can wait for collars, like, so I don't think it's like a hardship on anyone.
And applicants can extend that 45 days, as long as it's in writing and filed with the town clerk.
Request, though, that we need a backup plan just in case.
I would, I really would suggest that if you guys have, if your schedules allow it, that we meet on the 25th.
I left my phone in the car.
Could I ask that the dates be posted for both? The final, the day before, the notice has to be to the clerk? Because the notice has to go to the clerk, correct?
On the 26th, yes.
So they would have to notice to the clerk on that Thursday?
Yes.
So the last day is the 25th for them to actually act?
Correct.
So what happens? They don't have a quorum at the meeting?
So, just to clarify, the term to act is filing with the town clerk.
Okay.
So that's the 45, so they have to file with the town clerk within the 45 days. So if they do not have a quorum, they cannot act. And I would assume that they, there's some options that we could think about in that case. There could be the rule of necessity, if it applies. That's probably the route that would be taken. There's other things. It just gets constructively approved, or it gets denied by less than a quorum. But again, the first thing would be the rule of necessity.
Okay, so if Mark was, had to recuse himself by the rule of necessity, in order to have a quorum, he would be brought in?
And the rule of necessity, it's complicated, so we'd have to know the circumstances and everything, so I can't really tell you right now that, yes, that would happen, but that would, most likely, that would be my assumption that would happen.
Why can't it happen tonight while we're all here?
He hasn't had a ruling yet from the state ethics commission.
But, so this isn't, we can't have a necessity just because we're here right now, like, I don't know if I can make it that day, and...
Unfortunately, no, there's pretty set reasons to have a rule of necessity, unfortunately.
So it has to be the last day that's possibly available?
No, no, if you...
Well, because we'll have two more meetings at least before that.
If you can make, you know, a different time, if you could, if you, if the 25th doesn't work, you could do the 23rd.
I think this, well, say like the 17th, I believe we have a scheduled meeting.
Do you have to post a meeting 48 hours in advance?
Right, so you would have, no, you'd have to have it at 9:30. So you couldn't do it. You could do the 24th, but applicant's council can't be here on the 24th.
Am I still missing why the reason we couldn't shoot for a regular scheduled meeting? I think it would be the 17th?
Yeah, it's past the 45 days.
You have to have it next week.
So this is so funny, because the last meeting, we had quorum to vote, and we were advised to get your, what was it on? Was it on section 28? So your recommendation on it, and we had the ability to vote that day, and we were put off by the administrator of the town of Halifax.
But unfortunately, I wasn't able to be there on the 5th. I was at another meeting. So I...
But we were ready to, like, we could have motioned to vote on that evening.
Probably a good thing that we didn't, just to make sure that park is cleared by the ethics commission.
But that was, that's a new claim, isn't it? Because that wasn't...
Yeah, it's best, though, that we're...
It's a bunch of crap.
Oh, I see what you mean.
No, I would agree with Mr. Shroka.
You don't agree with me?
Mr. Chairman?
Charlie?
I just want to speak for myself here. I did advise the planning board a couple of weeks ago that we might want to consult with town council on this matter, so we could get her advice. Not necessarily a recommendation, but her advice, because it was obvious to me at that time that if the planning board voted, they'd be voting without, in fact, any background data or reasons why. And I had said very specifically two weeks ago, that no matter what the decision, I was not advocating any particular decision at time, no matter what the decision the planning board made, it was going to be litigated. And that I wanted the planning board to be on the best legal grounds for whatever decision you made, and have full reasoning within the decision, because that is what the court is going to look at when it is litigated.
We had in front of us two attorneys, one for each party, and we also had written documentation in front of us from other attorneys, including our town council.
Hold on, I'm going to address that. There's no way we're going to listen to somebody else's attorney, right?
No, no, no. From my town council, we had written stuff and emails from town council, and we read it all.
Mr. Chairman, regardless of what happened at the last meeting, we are here tonight. You have got to make a decision, this board.
All of this takes bearing.
We can argue about who said what, and why they said it, or what we didn't do, or who's the one who said what, but let's make a decision, please, for more than a week, and get this done.
All right, well, the way I see it, I would entertain a motion to try to get another meeting, as suggested, on the 25th. Other than that, due to these allegations against me, I mean, I think, although I don't care about them, I don't want to do anything that hurts the town. So I think it's a bunch of crap, and I have no concern about, like, acting, because I don't think it will pan out, but I don't want to make a decision and then have someone fight the town against it.
Can be the bearer of bad news?
Sure.
You can't make promotion.
And then we don't have quorum to vote.
Okay, so, all right, so if you guys don't want to make the motion, I'm probably not going to go ahead and, I can't make any motion, but I'm also probably not going to act on this, right? So that means we're not going to have anything done, and then it's just going to go through...
Right, we're voting on the meeting, so then you're in. Sorry, I just miscalculated it, because it's all confusing.
Yeah, so if you guys don't do anything, this just goes through, because nobody did anything. As long as everybody's cool with that, that's fine. Charlie?
I don't know whether, may I use counsel to provide any guidance on this simple matter in terms of who can make a motion? I understand in terms of normal procedure, chairs don't tend... I understand in terms of normal procedure, chairs don't tend to make motions, however, and in my talking, invoking the rule of necessity or anything, but it's more, it's practice, not law. There's nothing in the general laws or the place else that I'm aware of that says chairs and boards and committees can't make motions. It is practice and I've seen that over 40 years and I'm joking about 40 years, because this board, committee, board meeting means one before this one. But if there's a situation and no one, basically everybody sits on their hands and doesn't do anything, is perfectly legitimate and council correcting to the chair to make a motion.
So it's reasonable to believe that the reason that the chairman usually doesn't, so it doesn't look like the chairman's just kind of forcing the whole meeting? Is that safe to say?
Yes.
Okay.
Right now, we're just motioning to continue, so Mark can...
Yes, definitely.
Participate.
Just to continue.
Just to clarify that.
This is a, this is an administrative matter.
Yes. Thank you.
And, and Mr. Seelig is right. It's, it's practice. I, I, I haven't read your rules and regulations, the planning board rules and regulations, your, your rules and regulations for administrative matters, but I very rarely have seen any kind of motion practice in rules and regulations. It's usually just how things have always been.
So my next question would be that if we have the meeting on the last day, then the town clerk's won't, office won't be open after the, like if we don't have...
We have the 26th. We have Thursday to file it.
Okay.
It has to be filed on Thursday.
Do we have an agreement that if, that, that they would extend for it?
No, as I said, I, at the present time, I have no ability to consent to an extension. I need to report back to the land court tomorrow.
I'm just making sure there's no roadblocks.
Trust me, I've thought about it. I don't, I don't see a way around it.
Mr. Chairman, do we have a motion on the floor?
No, we do not.
Okay.
Well, at this time, if, there are no motions on the floor and there's, I don't think we're gonna entertain any discussion.
We could still make the motion, but they said, we can make the motion to say, hey, if for the time being, we can work towards the 25th, the 25th potentially meeting with other options, exploring other options available at the time of the whole, or make one, something of that sorts.
Are you making that motion right now?
No, I'm just asking.
I'm very aware of that, so I couldn't. Yeah, realistically, if we don't do anything by the 25th, we don't really need any more time. It just gets going.
Yeah, but we still need to, we, we need to fall through with what we can and can't do, so I think it's best for...
Can't hear, sorry, can't hear.
It's best for the town if we possibly try and explore that option of doing the 25th meeting on the 25th, but if the board is not able to make quorum, then we have to explore other options.
So you're trying to say that we make a motion that suspends or continues the meeting on the 25th, but then guarantees us more time in the event of...
No, 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 I didn't say, didn't say that.
All right, I don't see what you're getting at. Which is the option to explore more things, like if we have no more.
What if, what if we can't make quorum?
So on the 25th, if you cannot make a quorum on the 25th, then whoever's here on the 25th would continue the hearing to 8:00 or 9:00 AM on the 26th and try and get a quorum on the 26th, but no, but so you would have to post it. I would be safe, I would post a meeting for the 25th. I'd post a meeting also for the 26th sometime during the day before the, the 26th is a Friday, is the town clerk?
No.
Thursday, okay. Okay, so I would post a meeting for, say, 9 o'clock on the 26th and then if you can't get a quorum, you could continue, you could, you're, you're out of luck. You're out of time. But, but that's the only thing you could do at this point, or you could go, as, as Mr. Millia said, you could go forward and with two of you, you can't do anything. But, but his, a con, a conflict of interest was brought up on him. He, he does have the right to seek, you know, a ruling by the state ethics commission. It's my understanding that is what town council, your, your general town council advised, so I, I think, I think he's probably doing the right thing.
So at this point, we're just looking for a simple, simple motion?
We're just looking for a simple motion to continue until, to 7 o'clock on the 25th. I don't know, that, that would be...
Yeah.
Motion at second.
I think, yeah. So on this, I just have one more question. So at that meeting, instead of posting two, can't we just do the necessity? Because, you know, some of us go to work and stuff during the day, so.
I, I understand that. Unfortunately, if, if you don't have a quorum, even, even without, so for example, if it's just the three of you, he can't, we can't invoke the rule of necessity until we know why the fourth member can't be here. There, there's, there's certain reasons. There's, there's only certain ways you can invoke the rule of necessity.
I'm just trying to like...
It can't be just because, you know...
We couldn't make a weird meeting and then just the three of us know about it, just the three of us can show up and then we go there and that's probably why that, you know...
I can see that, okay. And you can't have a new thing too, so. Gotcha.
Could, could I suggest their motion is to 7 o'clock on the Wednesday night and 8 o'clock or 9 o'clock on Thursday if they don't get quorum that Wednesday night? Can they post both meetings right now?
They don't have to, they're, they only vote to continue the hearing, so they're voting to continue the hearing to Wednesday. They can post two meetings without voting to continue to that second meeting.
Okay, so they can post the meetings?
And then they can, yeah, it's the, so, so we have the, we have chapter 40, we have the zoning bylaw versus the open meeting law, so they're two different things. So they can post a meeting as long as it's within 48 hours and they can continue to the next day. That's okay.
I'll make the motion then to have a meeting on September 25th at 7:00 PM here in the, is this room available or are we...
No, we're doing interviews for the council agent director that night, so you'll need to either meet in the great hall and I can check to see if that's available or you'll need to meet in room one.
Room to be determined.
Room to be...
Please find out for you right now. Line dancing at 6, so yeah, they're gonna be going for two hours, so you're gonna need to meet in room one.
Okay, so I'm gonna restart that motion. I'm gonna make motion to meet on September, Wednesday, September the 25th, 2019, at 7 o'clock in meeting room one to continue the hearing on a matter of states.
I have motion, I have a second.
Okay.
I al, oh, I need to add to that. And then also on the 26th of September 2019 at, what time did we decide?
9:00 AM.
Whatever, yeah, sounds good.
And cannot be done in here, Charlie?
Uh, yeah, it should be, I'm gonna make sure. Meeting room one's gonna be available too.
Okay, so we'll just stick in meeting room one.
I have motion, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone found that fascinating? This is fun.
Make a motion, okay.
I have a motion.
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.